This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30, you call the meeting to order, roll call.
Here, Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Mayor Spelman.
Here. If you choose to, please stand for the opening prayer as your leadges. God of justice, mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Guide and protect all the city employees as they perform their duties. Whatever it is that you want, the results from this meeting, Lord, let it happen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Additions or demissions at this time, I would use that an executive session be added to the agenda with the purpose of reviewing the performance of the city manager, which would be regarding personnel matters of non-elected personnel presented to KSA 75-4319B1. And I'd like to add that as number six on the agenda. Yes. Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Perpetual of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
As amended.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider agenda.
Let's see. Approved at January 18, 2023, we're in the meeting minutes as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, we approved the minutes. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New business? See.
I don't know.
Yes, first one.
A resolution authorizing the environmental system research institute to provide cloud-based hosting, hosted GIS services for three years for an amount not to exceed $46,500.
Mayor Commission, as I described at Friday's work session, this is just an agreement to continue the agreement we already have with ESRI. This involves our geographic information systems, our mapping. Worked out really well the past three years and I think it's been a good thing for the city as a whole. Helps us to communicate with each other, return departments with our GIS as well, so. I would recommend that you approve this one too.
Motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We authorized an agreement with the Environmental System Research Institute, ESRIL, to provide a cloud-based hosted GIS service for three years for a amount not to exceed $46,500.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing then, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number two.
A resolution authorizing the neighborhood revitalization district rebate for blighted areas within the city of Arkansas City so that it is financially feasible to build a daycare center at 300 Golf Industrial Park Road.
That's me too. We do have some representatives from Creekstone here tonight if you would like to talk to them. But as again mentioned on Friday, the way the rebate currently would work is 75% rebate for seven years. And what they're requesting is a 90% rebate for 10 years. And also, the current rebate is capped at $500,000 of value. And we're asking, they're asking that we remove that cap and allow, I believe it's about $4 million is kind of the value that we're looking at there.
That's for the new additions that they're going to do.
That's only, this is only the daycare.
Yeah.
Yeah, only the improvements to daycare.
You want to hear from somebody from there? I would like to hear from someone.
Hello. What questions can I answer for you?
Who are you?
My name's Alex Munoz. I'm the Human Resources Manager at Creekstone Farms.
Question, I'm sure, one of the first questions people are going to ask, is this only going to be for your employees?
Yes, the daycare will only take children from our employees. However, the idea is to add capacity to the county entirely. And because we'll be able to offer the service to our employees at a decreased cost, it incentivizes them to pull their children from other licensed daycare into ours, which opens up capacity in the county.
Are there also some questions?
And by doing that, you're hoping to keep the turnover here, I mean, with that turnover.
Yes, yeah, this is going to be an effective tool for both retention and recruiting.
What's your turnover been in the past, has it been?
For the last three years, which is as long as I've been in my role, we've seen year-over-year decrease. When I got here, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 115% turnover. And we've got it under 100 this year, so we're moving in the right direction. But this is an important step for us, both to stabilize the workforce as well as meet our expansion goals.
And probably the best thing would be that when you have a husband and wife that works there, and I'm sure you do, that their children right there close and they'll help them out too.
Yes, sir. When we did our internal polling, we found that there was at least 70 respondents who said that they would have a spouse or other person in their household who could come work for us if they had reliable quality child.
Yeah. Well, we're fortunate to have you guys here, you know, for what you guys do and stuff. And we're really happy about sounding a lot to you guys, so it works out, you know.
Yes, sir.
Famously.
Having received the Business of the Year award from the Chamber this last week, and we're very feeling that appreciation from the city as well.
Thank you for what you guys do. That being said, I'll make a motion that.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right, one of the, one of the things that you're trying to remedy was that is the staffing concern, perhaps, ending up with dual households at your facility. With that being, with that being a strategy to try to increase your staffing, how are you going to staff a daycare? What is that going to look like?
Yeah, it's a very good question. One of the things that Creekstones realizes is that we very much have a regional impact and footprint. So there are quality licensed daycare providers in the area, but one of the biggest things that we've been able to do so far is part of Cali College in creating a good pipeline there from their student base. Part of what will help us meet our staff-to-child ratio will be allowing their students to come get their practicum hours at our facility. We've already discussed that in depth with their director over there. On top of that, we have a regional footprint recruiting out of the Wichita area, where the wages may not be what we're willing to pay for the best staff in the area. It's going to be a strategy to keep that daycare staff with the best of the best.
Okay, so you're going to use, utilize college students to staff the daycare. So is that at no cost?
Well, we'll have permanent staff that will be in each classroom.
Okay, no, I'm asking, so a percentage of your staffing will be college students typically. It sounds like it's in the same vein as public ed teachers who do student teaching that basically do a semester and they don't get any compensation for it. So I'm asking, one is, so these students won't be compensated? And two, what percentage of your staffing will that be?
Very good question. We haven't decided whether or not those students would be compensated. We're still recruiting our director, and once that director comes on board, we can make some of those decisions more clearly. But we will have a teacher qualified in each room that will oversee the room. And then those students getting their practicum hours would work under that teacher in order to make up that staff-to-child ratio that KDHE requires.
Well, that's the standard student-teacher protocol. Okay, well, all right, then, so, I'm sorry, I'm saying, so that's, I'm not, and it's not that I'm, my up is, I'll just restate that, my opposition or my concern to that is the proximity of a daycare to an industrial site. I voiced that in our previous vote. It's been recorded in the paper. I still hold that concern. I still say that modern industry, the 21st century, we have figured out that it is best to have a green space between residential and civilian non-employee. And I understand there may be a facility out there. I don't, I don't think this is one that's been used before, but it still concerns me. If there is an industrial incident, that, that one, and we learned that from the public school. I'm sorry, I want to just, I want to voice what this is. We learned from the public school, you get a report that there is a thing like an active shooter. Parents, rather than stay home and stay away, they want to run to the building and get the child, you know, or check on the safety of the child, which doesn't, which is, which complicates and compounds the emergency response. Now you've got people running in and out, wanting to get the kids. And now you've got to have another perimeter of security or you can't go in there. And then you've got all this anxiety around, yeah, but my child's in there. You're telling me I can't go get him. Anyway, so that's my concern about the proximity of the facility.
Asking to that.
Yeah, but I want to, I want to, that's a restating of things, but my question or point of interest is that functionally then, then if your staffing, and that sounds like a more of a long-term strategy because they'll have more students every semester that might need to get practicum time, then that functionally then is also kind of a subsidy, you know, kind of, we're talking about the revitalization, waiving property tax. And then this piece of it is, I just want to put what that number is out there, how big it is, that we're also potentially subsidizing the cost of your staffing with taxpayer dollars out of the county.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
So in addressing your security concerns, we have designed the building to have multiple layers of entry. So there will be a front entry area and then a secondary entry point that is staffed there, but will also require badge access at both. We will have hardened areas inside of each classroom so that the students and faculty or staff can retreat there in the event of an emergency externally. There will maintain what you call a green space that is undeveloped and just yard between that facility and our main plant. Of course, we'll have great communication between the two as there'll be a subsidiary of Creekstone Walnut Valley Learning Center. However, I believe that we do have the proper security measures to protect the children from anything that may come on in what you call an industrial incident. So in regards to the staffing situation, really that was born out of a mutual partnership with Cali College, who provided some guidance to us as we embarked on this kind of venture. They also need a place that they can send their students to get exposure to this age group. Currently, what they're doing is sending them to multiple locations throughout the county, and it's not very effective for them in the same way that it would be if you could send their students to one location to get the exposure for all those age groups that will be housing there. This is, using students in this way is a very common practice in Little Builders and Winfield does the same in college, and so it's kind of an established practice as it is. But like I said, we will have a full-time director, full-time assistant directors, multiple teaching staff that are permanent and full-time. So the students kind of just help supplement the regulations for having enough adults who are qualified to watch students. They won't necessarily be taken anyway whatsoever. It's really to their benefit, to their education.
Agreed with that, okay. So, and so they'll come out with something that satisfies Department of Education?
The Kansas Department of Health and Public, KDHE. That's who the regulatory body would be for childcare center.
Thank you.
That being said, I make a motion that we authorize the neighborhood revitalization rebate for the blighted area within the city of Arkansas City so it's financially feasible to build a daycare center at 300 Golf Industrial Park Road.
Second. Been seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would characterize, I have a hanging on my wall in my office, a picture of myself and city manager Mr. Freeman, a couple other elected officials, Don Avery, Jordan Keen, when we went out and broke ground for what was done in our operations. So it may sound like it, but it was my signature during my term as mayor that brought that facility in. So I'm not opposed to it being here. I just am restating my concern about what's in the better interest of children. I struggle with the institutionalization of children. I like mom and pops in small daycare facilities. And I am concerned, or so, that this might backfire and actually hurt smaller daycares, in-home facilities, where they do have a smaller census. I understand you suppose that that'll get you, that'll open up more spaces, but I just want to make sure that this isn't a Rob Teter to Pay Paul type of strategy for things. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Well, at the half ways, is that what it was called, that we went to? The Dallas? Dead or Walk? Dead or Walk? They were saying we have a shortage of 900-plus daycare. And that it is, do you know what your facility will be?
It will have the capacity once it's fully up and operational of 116 kids. So we're scratching the surface on the need.
Yeah, just barely.
There is, great, yes.
Can I address the podium?
Yes.
My name is Mickey Smith, 426 North C Street. I have a history in childcare. I think what they're doing, I've thought about this, and I do understand where you're coming from, Mr. Jennings, regarding the location. If they were trying to do this for the general public, there are better places closer to whatever street goes. Skyline Drive, is that what it's called? But I think what they're going to do could generate more people in the childcare industry and can support the rest of the people that struggle to get good hired employees. There are plenty of 18 to 22-year-old kids around here that if they want to be teachers, recreation majors, sports people, that could happen. I think, run well, and they're going to build a nice facility. They're going to be governed by the state and the childcare industry. They hire good people. This is a win-win. And I think it will spill over, not in a negative way, but in a positive way. I truly believe that will happen.
And I don't dispute, I don't dispute any of those points. That's, it's, okay. I voiced my concerns. They are of record, as I said, I know they've been reported in the local periodical also. Still, those concerns remain, okay? The economic impact of it potentially is good, all right? But I won't arrest. Well, that's okay, thank you, appreciate, sir, I appreciate your responses, thank you for that. I appreciate your input, thank you for that. I appreciate you allowing me the space to inquire about these things, Madam Mayor, thank you for that.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Say aye.
Okay, whatever, whatever says, I'm still not voting in support of it. So, four one is what I'm trying to get to. I'm not sure, when you say same sign, do I say aye for no?
Say nay.
I can say nay for no, okay, thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next one, Leslie. A resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the 2023 Modern Income Housing ARPA Grant Program from Kansas Housing, authorizing the mayor to sign and submit an application and approving the certificate of compliance with federal requirements.
So this is an MIH ARPA grant, and this would go in conjunction with the grant we just submitted last week, the Spartan, anyway, it's for housing. This particular grant will be a down payment assistance and also funds to do streets and utilities. And this particular part of the grant has to go into building houses, so which the down payment assistance would be part of that. So the previous grant is for also streets and utilities and land purchase, so that these two work together, each of them are the matching funds for the other one, so.
Motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the 2023 Modern Income Housing ARPA or ARPA Grant Program from Kansas Housing and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application. Second.
So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. City manager.
So, dates here, so on February 14th, we'll have the contractor walkthrough for the CBDG housing grant that we were awarded last year. This is to do renovation on homes. And so we have five houses that have been through the inspection process and have been selected to get started. Hopefully, we'll end up with 11 or 12 homes before it's all over, but there's five array to roll. Things like siding, roofs, windows, those types of things. Each house has a different need, but that's, on the 14th, we have contractors coming through to walk through, and then they'll, they'll submit their bids. And then on February 23rd, we'll have a bid opening for those five projects. And then March 7th, the recommended bids will come to you for approval. We received some more open settlement dollars, about $26,800 this last week. And then I also signed for five more settlements to come. It'd be for Teva, Allergan, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. So those will be the next round of avoid settlement dollars that we'll start seeing coming in.
How much we got total right now?
Um, I think there was, it's going to be close to 30, do you remember, chief?
It's going to be in that range.
Yeah. This was by far the biggest ones we received so far. I think the first few were like 3,000.
That's in a special account or?
Yeah, it can only be used for certain things. And then on February, at the February 21st meeting, the joint venture will be here to give you guys an update on the Witchwire Treatment Plant, kind of where we're at with the project and specifically where we're at with the budgetary issues, you know, how we're coming in with that, what they expect to see towards the end. I think we're, I think all the major purchases are done, so we're pretty, we should be in pretty good shape, except for, you know, any surprises that they may come up with in the digesters with concrete work and stuff.
That should be done in spring, in March?
Yeah, we're still looking probably March, May. There's a few things that are kind of lagging, so the bulk of the project should be done on time. And then there'll be a few things that'll probably stretch into the summer because of supply chain issues. I think one of the big ones is the UV lighting, that process. I think they're buying on some things like that and getting that in. So that'll be something that won't affect.
That's still under the bed, we.
The idea is, it's just some of these supply chain things are, they're not coming in like they're supposed to. So the bulk of the project will be done on time. Over here on the alley sewer project, they just got the supplemental documents in for the manhole structures, and those have been approved. Kansas Gas has happened to replace the line down that alley now. The, when they got the concrete pulled up, the gas line was too shallow to allow for the new base and surface to go in. So they're putting in the gas line lower, so that'll be, that's moving forward now. I got an update on the deep traffic study, that's for the schools. It's kind of the same story, they're still, it's still on the list. They're hoping maybe in late February, they'll have that to the point it can go to KDOT, so. And then we'll have a CBDG monitoring visit on February 23rd. That's for the North Summit Project, and that'll be where CBDG comes in and audits the funds and makes sure everything's accounted for and done properly. And then on the final thing is the rate reviews. We have a couple of forecasting changes to make with the sanitation and stormwater. And then we should have something to bring to you guys. And then we're going to start probably the first rate review next week with her. So that's starting to finally kind of come together, so. And that's all that bit's on.
Freddie Kuntz?
He's the mayor. Commissioners? Do you need me to read that? I was going to say.
Do you want me to read the I O?
I would.
I don't have to.
You'll read them.
I'm sorry. A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma Fire Department. There are four items to this. I understand the commission wants to enact them all in one motion. Is that still correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's with the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma, the city of Newkirk, Oklahoma, the Hilldale, Oklahoma Fire Department, and River Road, Oklahoma Fire Department to provide mutual aid to each other in an event of an emergency within each other's range of resource capabilities, including fire and EMS apparatus, equipment, and manpower as requested and available.
Anything you need to know on that, it's going to be the same thing what we did with Call Nation Emergency Management.
That's something we do about every year, I mean, resolution we do every year, I think.
It's as needed, I don't know.
These are, these are all new.
These are all new.
Yeah, I haven't heard of these before.
Okay, you're just, the reservation, I guess, we've done in the past.
Yeah.
I mean, the casino thing.
Mutual aid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any, you know, dentistry to go cross state line to do, or have to have certain license? Do you guys have to have different certifications of license? Do Oklahoma people need to have anything different? If they came up here and said, I mean, are there any issues with states certifications? I know in Kansas.
In Massachusetts, you can handle that better than.
Kansas is what they call a compact state, meaning if someone is in good standing in their home state, which in this case would be Oklahoma, with no derogatory, they can come into Kansas and practice. So Kansas is a compact state for EMS. I don't know how it works.
But they would do it under their protocols, under their medical director. And vice versa, we would be under our medical director instead of theirs and follow our own protocols.
Sorry.
No, be good. That's what she's there for, so, yeah.
And then because we're a border town, don't we have a little more leeway than you would if we were in Wichita?
No, it applies the same, it would apply the same for them. The state of Kansas and most states do require mutual aid agreements for EMS. So, and we've always had the mutual aid agreement with Winfield, but when we get down south, that has always, I've been here 12 years, it's always been an issue.
What do you mean by an issue?
Egos.
Ego. So if you have two chiefs, when you have. Ego, so if you have two chiefs that, when you have two chiefs that put those mutual aid agreements in place, it seems to run a little smoother.
Okay.
Which, by last week, I mean, we put that into motion, I don't know if you guys saw that or not, on that fire, we actually met N F P A standards, which rarely happens, but we had eighteen plus on a scene, and that you don't get that very often when you have that many personnel, so it worked out really well, we called Blackwell, New Kirk, South Haven. So it was Winfield, so it was, it was what what a mutual aid agreement is supposed to look like and work, so.
I mean, if you had a large problem, then you would call a man.
Absolutely. We use our.
We get called Strata Field for Winfield all the time for mutual aid, because they're status zero, don't have personnel, don't have trucks, whatever the case may be.
Or provide for fire, I mean, we have an automatic medic aid with Winfield, which is a little different than with a mutual aid, does a few different things, but we do that with Winfield as well.
So do all of these? All of these that we're entering into these MOUs with, excuse, I'm sorry, I'm getting in trouble, do all of these that we are entering into MOUs with? Do they bring, do all of them bring more than staff, do they have comparable equipment? It says manpower, apparatus, equipment.
Depends on what is requested.
So they don't all have the same stuff we have?
No.
And are there some of them where we're?
They have things we don't have, some of them do, so.
Yeah, like a rescue trailer, a ton of rescue stuff that we may not have, we have a ladder truck that many of those departments down south don't have, so we can provide.
Okay, thank you. Making sure we're getting something from it. Goodwill.
Oh, they, they helped us, they helped us a lot, too.
And then what, since you mentioned your fire, what did they bring up that we didn't have?
Not that we didn't have, but you have to remember, just because there's one fire doesn't mean we we can't continue to cover the city. So we have to be diligent enough to be able to respond to other emergencies as well, so we call on their help and their personnel, they actually brought five water supply trucks, and New Kirk has a forty five hundred gallon truck, and and other ones had two thousand gallons and that kind of thing, and then personnel, and then I think that yeah, that was about it, that's about what we needed, just personnel and water supply from them, so that's what we use on that fire.
I I read, knew what you need, what you had to have was water.
Absolutely, yeah, no hydrants.
Has Conk been reached out at all, they seem to be a big, the bigger that whole area, I.
So now you're, you're touching a subject that's a little sensitive.
I don't, yeah.
I'm not gonna.
Think of the cities around that would be.
So interesting, because you would think, he's an Arkansas guy, their 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 fire chief is actually Jonesboro, he got his master's from Arkansas State, I got my master from Arkansas State. So I'm getting to know him pretty well, I didn't know him when he was at Jonesboro as a chief there, but from what I understand, they don't do mutual aid agreements with too many departments, it's a little sensitive from what I'm gathering.
And why is that, or do you know?
That one I don't know. Remember when I said egos and such, that may be some, I don't know, that's just something that they tend to decline to do. But I will, I will say this, I'm working on a few more, so this is not, these are not the last ones, but they do have the Phillips sixty six down there, and that's a huge hazmat, which we have a ton of hazmat in our area, if you didn't know, we do, and so I'm reaching out to them for a mutual aid contract as well, so I'm, I'll try.
I was just trying to think of why some of those cities wouldn't reach out to them as well.
They have.
All right, that's, that's.
If I can leave it at that for now, let me see if I can work my magic and and we can do it, but I'm I'm gonna try.
Well, I don't, I just don't know why it's like River Road or Killarri or some of those, whenever.
Those are closer.
You know.
Yeah, they're a little closer, but, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding on those four entities, I mean, is that, is that, Larry, is that, can we do that, or?
Just reference what she said, the four entities.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second, no further discussion. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried.
Next, I'm in police department is trying to report for special use vehicles on city streets.
Good evening, Mayor.
Mr.
Before I talk about special use vehicles, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the opioid settlement funds, I know that we we actually ended up getting quite a large chunk recently, so I've reached out to the A G's office, and they've supplied me with the guidelines for spending, so our goal is to come up with a strategic plan on how to use those funds to positively affect drug abuse in our communities, so if there's anything that is, you know, is paramount to us, is making sure that we're making the right choices and doing the best that we can for our community, especially when it comes to drug abuse. So that'll be forthcoming very quickly, in fact, I reached out to the fire department today and see what input they may have, I think that in that strategic plan process, we're just gonna reach out to some other stakeholders within the community, health department, probably healthcare, other law enforcement, to see how we can best utilize those funds to make a difference for that, so shifting gears, pun intended, special use vehicles, just, just within the the last week, I've talked to Mr. Bowman, he came in and visited with me, I apologize for how long it's taken to to get this moving forward, rolling forward, and so in talking to him, he had mentioned Ellenwood, Kansas also has a program that I have reached out to, and I'm waiting to get some information back on. First and foremost, I think safety is the biggest issue, and in the last meeting, we had a good representation from the community on, especially U T Vs, they have some safety features that are added that is a plus in comparison to golf carts, so, you know, looking at a broader conversation, I I really want to focus on safety and what's best for the community, and looking at exactly where to operate those particular vehicles. So I know that, just because of sheer volume of traffic, Summit Street just has a lot of traffic, therefore it has more traffic accidents. So that's something that that will weigh into that whole equation, but we are moving forward, I'm I'm gonna grab some more information from from Ellenwood to see what their program looks like, and hopefully come up with something that everybody can be happy with, with safety in mind.
So what's your, what's your time span on that, a couple of months, or?
I would say at least a couple of months.
Yeah.
More.
Push it to no later than the fifteenth of March, when it starts getting warm, people are gonna want to be out in there.
I I can definitely put it on the top shelf and see if we can make it a priority to get something to, and get it to legal, so that way the city attorney has a chance to look at it and get it formulated, so that way it's it's in ordinance.
Please don't compromise due diligence in the, in exchange for expediency. We just, I mean, if you can, I'm gonna say if we can get it, and that's a month out, you can have something that's credible and well thought out by then, then that's great, but if 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 it takes more time, it takes more time, I think, public safety, traffic safety, we, it's easier to it's easier to address it in a comprehensive and thorough way than it is to put something out there and then go back and spend a lot more time trying to fix it and catch oversights, so.
Will do, thank you very much.
One thing, my own, my opinion with speaking to some, I, it's just my opinion, I think the golf carts and U T Vs are separate, I don't think golf carts are allowed anywhere. I think U T Vs are are a safer, stronger, sturdier thing to have on streets than golf carts. I think golf carts should just be limited to very, basically, that's another issue, I think the main issue should be the U T V, and then golf carts, and those that have U T Vs and have golf carts and have been to communities across the country will all say, you don't really want golf carts on your streets. I mean, so I think that's a major safety issue, I mean, from the three or four people I spoke to that have taken their razors or whatever across the U S on, and been in communities, so, I don't, my thought is, no, I wouldn't want golf carts on them, my thought, that's just an opinion, I know we got a long time, a little bit longer to discuss it, but that was my thoughts, so.
On the, on the other hand, that is a sharp looking inset there with your camera that's affixed, it caught my attention, it's a lot less
Noticeable.
A lot less noticeable than having the thing hanging out here.
And we don't have it fall off of us.
There you go, it looks like it went.
Any items from the commissioners to discuss? If not, do we have anyone to speak to us from the audience? Need a motion to go into a session. It's been moved, they will go into the executive session, the governing body resists to an executive session for a period of thirty minutes. It should bring us out at six forty.
Do you want anyone in there?
Yes, I want the commissioners and the city attorney at this time.
I, Madam Mayor, what we gave a generic motion, the motion, as the item you asked to be restated is for the purposes of the performance review of the city manager.
Yes, sir.
Can we effectively do that without the city manager?
I'd like to, like the five commissioners and the city attorney to discuss first, and then we'll bring him in.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I don't think you got the full motion out.
That's, that's a big piece of, yeah, I'm trying to get clarification, just so that what we do is transparent to the public.
Okay, I will start over. I mean, that's a governing body resists into an executive session for a period of thirty minutes to review the performance of the city mayor, which would be regarding personal matters of elected personnel pursuant to K S A seven five four three one nine B one, the open meeting will resume at now six forty one, in that meeting, I would like to have commissioners, city attorney at the present time with the city manager when called.
I took, I obviously drank this low water today, I'm not sure what you just said. You want to have to say.
I want this, I want the five commissioners and our attorney in there, and then we will add Randy after a few minutes of discussion.
Okay, so in the thirty minute?
In that thirty minute period, yes. There's a second to that.
A second to that.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six forty two.
This conference will now be recorded.
We move to extend this for another, how long is, at least twenty, I extended for another twenty minutes. It should bring us back in here at.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve. They're moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same people, right?
This conference will now be recorded.
It's little shops.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't care for it, we tried it.
The, I think they were known for their chips, their flour chips.
Okay. I know it's, people around here really love it, so.
Yeah, but it's, I gave you guys a back for the doubt, yeah, because you went in, you'll have to come back out if you need to extend. Yeah, it was about quarter till at the latest, twenty minutes or three.
Yeah, that's off, that's my.
I lost out, I think you said thirteen.
I said seven twelve, I think we said twenty, yeah.
Yeah, we thought we had ten minutes.
I think the law would have forgiven us if, because our motion said resume at seven twelve, would have been okay, but we can redo this.
Okay.
Ten more minutes.
I make a motion to continue the exec for ten more minutes with the same individuals in the exec as before.
Second, ten more minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Extend for fifteen minutes, is that what?
Yeah, with the option that we'll bring Randy in, in fifteen minutes.
Or after fifteen minutes?
No, within, within those fifteen minutes, we're gonna meet for fifteen more minutes as the exit session with Larry, and we will, and then with the option of bringing Randy in.
Who's making that?
Or is that, can you do that, I mean, is that illegal, or how would you work?
Yes, who's making the motions?
That is.
Okay, he made it, who's second?
I'll second, if that's a legal motion.
Clarify that we're going to bring the city manager.
Yeah, we will be bringing, yeah, within those fifteen minutes, we will be, we will be bringing him in, yes.
Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Time flies. Time flies. I make a motion that we go, well, yeah. She's okay, is that good?
We'll have enough hope.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion, we continue for five more minutes, ten, ten more minutes with the city manager.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The governing body action taken afterwards.
No. Yeah, tournament's next, you want me to change, you want me to modify it so we can add that in?
No, that's fine, we just get the number from her when she comes back out.
Seven forty three.
Seven four three.
J or Charles seconded that.
This conference will now be recorded.
Batman and Robin. I'm not even sitting here. I'm walking.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Still the fate of Gotham City.